Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M on April twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. Time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mrs. Call will offer the invocation and Mr. Blair will lead us in the pledge.
Dear Lord, we come before you on this beautiful spring evening in gratitude for all that we are given and granted, and we ask for your discernment as we guide the city of Washington Courthouse in the best possible manner forward. We continue to give thanks for all of the blessings in our lives, and we ask for your guidance during tonight's meeting. In your name, amen.
Amen. You want me to pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sylvia and Jim. Roll call, please.
Paul. Yes, the others. Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on March. One in April. April, April nine. This is March twenty.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Was April, whatever our April meeting was.
Yes.
I guess we missed that part, didn't we? Uh, anyway, well, this is the amendment. From our earlier April meeting. Did anybody see any changes that needed to be made? It was April ninth. Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept these amendments as second.
It was Caleb's, I believe, Kelly. Roll call.
Paul.
I'll abstain since I wasn't at that meeting.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz. Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have reports of council committees in this evening. Pretty pink. Mr. Hawk, you're up.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty five, at six thirty P M. Ted Hawk presided and owes an attention to Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Jeff Benary, police chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. The committee benefited from a report by the Fire Department. Chief Downing noted the installation of a new program for siren alerts. Chief Downing presented a news release regarding the alerts. Chief Downing encouraged citizens to be prepared for inclement weather due to the recent tornado. The committee was presented with a draft fire code ordinance. The committee recommended discussions continue. Chief Benary stated that the police department and the Ohio State Patrol successfully performed joint criminal interdiction and traffic enforcement operations. Chief Benary stated that the police patrol tests have been completed and would be reviewed by the Civil Service Commission. The committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. The committee noted that the gas company continued to remove meters from unused services within the city. The administration advised the committee that in the scheduling of the removal of these services, the two thousand and twenty five street and alley paving program would be reviewed and altered. The administration noted that road salt had been moved from Elm Street to the service department. Mr. Gary Dean advised that the service department completed lawn restoration work throughout the city. The committee noted that storm damage cleanup continued. The committee noted hazardous tree work. The administration noted that sewer line repairs continued. The committee noted that the water department had completed valve exercises. The administration advised the committee that hydrant flushing would continue. The administration noted that the water department was currently replacing lead services with copper services. The administration advised the committee that five new water pits had been installed on Hendrick Drive and seven were scheduled for installation. The administration discussed the option of establishing contractor registration requirements. The committee recommended discussions continue. The administration discussed the option that the contractors would be required to register total cost incurred by homeowners of replacement of water, wastewater, and stormwater service lines. The committee recommended discussions continue. The administration noted that in preparation for the warmer weather, playground equipment restoration, mowing, and park cleanup had progressed at all city parks. The committee noted the demolition notice of twelve fifty eight U S twenty two Northwest. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with street light, like, street light legislation. The committee discussed the proposed trash hauler service requirements. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the proposed changes to the firework ordinance limiting use to, limiting use to the Independence Day holiday and New Year's. The committee recommended that legislation be presented at council. The committee noted that grounds were continued at Worsing, Pennsylvania. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly, Board Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. That was a lot. Any discussion, questions, comments? Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Paul. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have our reports from city officials, starting with Mr. Denon. You are up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. It has been a rather long evening, and it would be nice if we switched to a much more pleasant task. We have several guests with us today. I believe that you have a proclamation, and for at least one of our guests, this will be a considerable surprise. So, Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Denon. If you'd like to allow our guests to stay seated for the time being. But I would like Mr. Schultz and Mr. Blair to come down here and join me. We have two members of council who are veterans. They both served and they're the council that did, so I would like them to come down here and stay beside me. This is a proclamation of the City of Washington Courthouse for Mr. Edwin A. Ruber. Whereas Mr. Edwin A. Ruber is the last known living World War II soldier of Fayette County and a proud servant of Ohio and the United States. There aren't too many people that can wear that hat right now. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber is a gentleman of ninety-five years, in every use he commenced service with the Ohio National Guard in nineteen forty. In response to the World War, in nineteen forty-one, the Ohio National Guard was called into service of the Government of the United States. The Ohio Home Guard was hence reconstituted or reorganized as the Ohio State Guard. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber's father, Paul Ruber, owner of the roofing business in Washington Courthouse, was a sergeant in the Ohio State Guard and took Mr. Edwin Ruber to enlist in Company D, Second Infantry. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber reported to the Army on East Street in Washington Courthouse daily after gaining valuable knowledge and skills at Camp Light and Camp Perry Training Centers. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber received a commendation for the State of Ohio assigned by Governor Frank J. Loushey for his faithful service with the Ohio State Guard. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber, a window, widow with four children, Mary Carol also did well. With one child, the union of Edwin and Carol then produced an additional three children. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber contributed to the success of many commercial and industrial establishments, including Albert's Grocery, Miplin Grocery, Hagerty Shoe Factory, National Cash Register, and Jack's Harvest Manufacturing. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber, it is a man of our community, one of the founders of Grace Community Church, the first archery club in Fayette County, and a scout master for Troop Sixty-four and Boy Scouts. And whereas Mr. Edwin Ruber became a skilled gunsmith making beautiful working firearms and a replica of a submachine gun he carried during his service. Whereas Mr. Edwin and Carol Ruber's family of eight children grew with nine to include eighteen grandchildren and nineteen great-grandchildren. And whereas we, the people of Washington Courthouse, desire to express our gratitude to Edwin Ruber and celebrate the story of Edwin's life. Now therefore, we, the city council, the City of Washington Courthouse, Mr. Dale Lynch, Chairperson, Mr. Steve Schultz, Vice Chairperson, Mr. Jim Christman, Member of Council, Mr. Ted Hawk, Member of Council, Mr. Caleb Johnson, Member of Council, Mr. Jim Blair, Member of Council, Mrs. Sylvia Call, Member of Council, and Mr. Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, do hereby, do hereby cause this proclamation to be so drafted. We are citizens of our community to thank Mr. Edwin A. Ruber for his valued commitment to our lives. In witness whereof, hereunto, Mr. Dale Lynch, Chairperson, Mr. Joseph J. Denon, City Manager, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, Clerk, have subscribed their names and caused the seal of the City of Washington Courthouse to be affixed this twenty-third day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. Wow.
That is fantastic.
And I'm gonna let Jim and Steve hand this to you. And I'll just stand on side. Joe, wait a minute. Joe, come up here.
Okay.
Set your names up, too. Go on that side, but I want our two veterans to give.
Okay. Hey, look up here. Got it.
Very good.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
And everything else you did for the community, you did a lot.
Yes.
You've got to have a hundred decades. I've learned a little bit. Oh, my God. That was fantastic.
It's really great to have you and honor you this evening, and your family, too, so much.
Yes. Thanks for bringing.
I can tell you I read several of those, but never that long. You have done some amazing things. Not just during your service, but since then, your service to this community. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And I think we told you, you don't have to stick this up to you, but we really appreciate your coming and giving the chance to recognize all you've done for this house.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
That is amazing. I wonder, I should ask him how he was when he enlisted.
He's very young.
Seventeen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. I think that was a good, that's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Denon, that's, you don't get any more fun than that.
Yes. No, that's the highlight of the evening by far. Putting those together is always a lot of fun. And, you know, it, sometimes then where it doesn't really work, you begin to just start a sentence with where has every time. But other than that, you get over that.
You get a lot of where has.
Yes, there was. Well, tonight, you have several pieces of new legislation. Uh, ordinance number ten, two thousand and twenty-five, which is the arrangements for the JED, for the Area Joint Economic Development Agreement in Jefferson Township. Uh, that expands that and makes the JED applicable to the area that will be occupied by Amazon, which we're very pleased to be at this point in that process and would like to compliment the Jefferson Township trustees for their cooperation, help, and assistance in arriving at this point and the opportunities that it brings to the community for continued prosperity and growth. With that said, uh, we're a three-reading process, and the township is set up a little bit differently in their one meeting and done. So they are going to be meeting on the fifth. Our desire is to finish this process on the fifth, and so that that coordinates, uh, which also means that it would be nice if the reporting of it corresponded with the township. It's always feel bad because we're a three-reading process, you know, it's likely kind of gone ahead of them, which is not the case. It's just our process is a little bit different. Uh, but that is something that we've looked forward to, and we have been able to accomplish. You also have three pieces of legislation that deal with labor contracts for dispatcher, police patrolmen, and sergeants. Uh, would like to complement the F O P and our local members and the local folks that participated in the negotiation process. That can be complicated. And for the folks on the other side of the table, too, their members have a lot of diverse opinions about what's important, what isn't, and what they should do, so many of them are already red. It never needs a job. Thankfully, our negotiations typically are, you can have very heartfelt opinions, and you can have very strong opinions, but they're very exceedingly civil, not what your classic version of a labor contract negotiation is by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, would like to recognize the Rotary Club. Tuesday, we went out and for Earth Day, uh, we went along the trail and we picked up a bit of trash, got rid of that, and it was a wonderful day to do that, about perfect weather for that. Uh, but that was a lot of fun, and I'd like to thank all the members that participated in that. Uh, Courthouse Rennall, very few generational businesses have been open for forty years, and making that generational shift sometimes can be a challenge for a small business. Uh, so really would like to thank, uh, Jack and Josh and everybody out there, and, uh, it was a very pleasant opportunity to be able to stop by and say hello to them. Uh, Countryside Drive, uh, towards the front of the development up by Dan Dean's house. We've had a bit of trouble with one particular section of waterbank. Uh, so that is what we've been out there doing, and, uh, hopefully, we will get that resolved in the near future so that we are not out there digging away anymore. Uh, but that one has proven to be a little bit of a challenge. We have a little bit of challenge, too, with a water service on Fayette and Elm, which installing a water service is usually very straightforward. Uh, this one was a little bit more complicated. Oh, nothing had occurred in that particular section of the street for a very long time, and when they did that sewer project in the seventies, uh, they, they would have called it bank run gravel. I would have called it stuff that you just dug up somewhere else and dumped in this hole. And then they poured concrete on top of it, and what happens is they didn't thoroughly compact the gravel, sand, the stuff that they put in there. So you develop this void, which sometimes can be a problem and a little bit of issue with where the sewer line was and so forth. But we got that sorted out, or we'll actually finish in the future. Out in the industrial park, uh, we've been, oh, basically rebuilding a number of catch basins out there. Where you get that truck traffic and a truck pulls over to the side, that's really hard in a catch basin when it ends up underneath the wheels. Uh, so we've done a lot of rebuilding work there, which doesn't sound particularly earth-shattering, but, uh, the folks at the service department, you know, they do all that in-house, and they do a very good job of it. And it's part of the things that you have to fix, maintain, and deal with so that the whole system works correctly. Uh, but that, we've been out there doing that work. We've been very pleased with that. We've been planting some trees, and Arbor Day is coming up, which Ted will preside over faithfully and read the Great Proclamation and, you know, declare that we all love trees. Uh, that, if you have the opportunity to come out, we will be out at the high school where we, uh, you have that little tree nursery now. That was what we did with some of that grant money so that, uh, younger people who have a horticultural interest uh, can expand that and can, uh, learn about that a bit more. And the plan would be for those trees that they, uh, grow up to a larger size, that one day they would become street trees or park trees, uh, which is a neat thing. Uh, you know, you tried to pick tree species that grow at a reasonable rate, you know, that, uh, I forget where we ended up up there, but that, so that it has showed some progression. If you picked out tri-colored beech, it'd be two inches taller five years from now, and you'd be kind of a bit disappointing. Hazardous tree removal, we've been on that. Hydrant flushing, uh, we finished up. Uh, so busy time of year, spring. Uh, but would very much like to stress how pleased we are with the cooperation and support of the Jefferson Township trustees. And ideally, you know, on the fifth, we'd talk about it both at the same time, but that is something we're quite pleased with, and that means you folks will have some special meetings where you'll deal with that legislation and also the fireworks matter. Remember, there are two, uh, potential amendments to legislation, and if you have a question when we get there, you can ask me, you can ask Mark. You gotta remove them from the table first, motion second. Then motion second to read, discussion. Then in discussion, you can have a motion second if you want to amend them. In keeping with the language provided, you can do that. Uh, vote that question, and then the question then becomes the amended order, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Uh, so that is, uh, the process there, which can get a little bit fiddly. But that, uh, you know, we'll get it to the point where everybody understands what we're doing. Uh, but that is, uh, oh, an unusual amount of activity for tonight. You know, it's been quite busy. Questions?
Mr. Denon, thanks to you, and I don't know who all is involved, Mr. Pitstick, Mr. Sockman, Chief Benary, for getting that, those contracts done. I've been involved with doing contract negotiations with the school. It's not easy.
No.
It's not usually the most fun you can have, but it's good that you got it done. And I know you're turning to the fire department next.
Yeah, fire would be next. And then we will finish with the service department. Thankfully, fire is all one group. Police is the only one that's split into three, like they are. Uh, which makes it a little bit more, a little bit more difficult because you have to think about how what you do in one contract affects the other two, uh, because there's a few things that are linked together there, uh, which there's some positives and some distinct drawbacks to that. In theory, one of the reasons that that was done was to make the process a little bit easier, quicker, and I don't know if it really made a whole lot of difference there. But that is the report for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sockman is not here. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Pitstick, you got anything?
Well, we've been mowing yard. We've been forty, uh, forty.
Forty?
Forty.
Oh, my goodness.
So far, so.
That's amazing. Wow.
Also, did I get my memorandum with reference to the substitution? I did. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have an extra copy of it?
Probably need to read it.
Well, yeah. Was that, I'm guessing.
You can pass them down.
It was, it was, Mr. Mr. Miller is here tonight. Did I get that correct?
Yes, sir. He's here tonight. Basically, what happens in the City of Washington Courthouse when the original zoning ordinance was passed back in the early nineties, everybody was grandfathered in at their current use. So you could have a store in a residential area, you could have a church in a residential area, but it still continued to be a church. Right now, there are several, uh, non-conforming buildings. I'd say maybe ten left. There might be ten. Most of them are older churches. Some are older structures, uh, that used to be a barber shop, maybe. If you go down on Lewis Street, uh, down by Mr. Christman's office, there's several buildings right along there. One used to be a store, now it's half converted into residence, into a residence. Uh, but if a building is a non-conforming building, is left vacant for more than two years, it becomes a non-conforming structure. Basically, you can't do anything with it. What the substitution language does, it allows B Z A, Board of Zoning Appeals, to go through its process, and the process would be when somebody comes in and makes an application for a non-conforming use in a residential area, they would file with B Z A to have a hearing, and B Z A would determine whether or not it, uh, conformed to a non-conforming or to a, uh, use that would ordinarily be in a particular, our residential. In this case, they wanted to create a new class called single room occupancy, which is part of the ordinance, which would allow the facility that Mr. Miller is talking about, uh, to be, to be allowed to exist in that particular zoning, in the residential zoning area. That's basically what this, uh, ordinance does. And again, there's probably, there's, there may be ten buildings that exist within the City of Washington Courthouse that would fall under the new language of substitution. Anybody have any questions?
Kelly, you sent that out, right?
I did. I emailed it. To everybody's.
Yeah, maybe on board ship.
Yeah, it was emailed.
Oh, he was on ship. Yeah, he didn't get it.
Any questions?
When you do this, if you didn't do this, I guess is a better way of looking at it. If you did, it would be forever and no use whatsoever. It would deteriorate, and then eventually we have to abate it and tear it down.
Right, right. So it allows it to be used for basically a activity that actually would be less traumatic to the neighborhood. For instance, in this case, I believe it was a church. Uh, you would have Sunday morning services, okay? And you would have a large number of cars parked there. Or you would have people coming in and out all during the week. In this case, this use, you, you don't have a large amount of cause. Uh, it's, uh, a single room occupancy. And so it is less, it is actually less detrimental to your neighborhood than what a church would be under the circumstances, less crowded, less traffic. So in the statute or in the, in the ordinance, it, I, I believe it lays out that it would be a less. So in the statute or in the ordinance, I believe it lays out that it would be a less intrusive use than what the original use would be.
But it would not come under hotel motel?
No.
Rules and regulations.
Point of clarification. Mark, when the, we have a non-conforming use in, let's say, you know, a residential zone.
Right.
Okay. And the non-conforming use has ceased for several years. The building isn't unusable. You just have to use it the way the zoning classification that it's in. So you end up with things like Fayette Street Market. Where, you know, you had a market there.
Right.
And now it's a residence or apartment of some sort or something of that nature.
Right. But you're using it for an alternative reason. And this is what the statute does.
If you do this and turn a, like a church, like we're speaking about, into an SRO, do you have to inform a letter around the neighborhood to tell the residents what's going on in their neighborhood?
The BZA would, would publicize the fact that they're having a meeting. People could come.
Okay. Okay. Makes sense.
And then they would have a hearing.
Okay.
And then if it met certain requirements, then they would allow that.
Okay. Now I see that. Okay.
Mark, can you clarify what an SRO would, like, what does that mean?
It's a single room occupancy. So it allows for the rental of single rooms to individuals who may be down on their luck.
Okay.
May not have the resources.
Okay.
And can rent them by the week, by the, by the month, I'm assuming.
Every by the month.
By the month.
Okay.
But you would not have any long-term lease, like two or three years lease?
Two or three years, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tell your name again.
Brian Miller, address thirty-seven forty-nine Rock Road, Columbus, Ohio. No, two, three years, no. The max would be twelve months.
Twelve months, okay. So maybe a one-year lease.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mister Miller, how many BZA meetings did you attend?
Quite a few. Quite a few.
What I mean by that is there were a lot of questions.
This planning commission wasn't.
Well, planning, well, yeah. But there were a lot of questions that came up. That's why I felt comfortable about this because I've heard all the questions, so. I know it was three, three or four, maybe I don't know.
The church, it has its own, does it have its own parking?
It does in the back. Yes, sir.
There's a park for, how many cars do you have?
Probably about three to four.
Okay. And how many rooms will you have?
Three to four.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what other point of clarification for everybody's benefit, Mark?
Mister Miller has talked about his plans with his property. But that is not necessarily indicative of every single occupancy rooming house you could have. And the Board of Zoning Appeals would have fairly broad authority to come up with any reasonable requirement or restrictions upon the operation of a, of this type of use. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Every time that a substitution takes place, it has to be in front of BZA. There has to be a public hearing. The BZA members will, I'm assuming, go out and take a look at the non-conforming structure. They will determine, like you said, the number of parking spaces, the times that they can operate, under what conditions they can operate, what times. That's all before the BZA.
Good.
Good.
Anything else?
Just, just a technical question. So I know that the issue is, on the current one, it reverts back to a residential if it's not used as the non-conforming use for a period of two years. In order to get the SRO facility, is that designation being imposed only on buildings which have stopped their use for two years?
No.
Okay, so it's before the two years.
No, no. This is, this is only one of the uses that's possible. This is what we put, we're adding this to the
Yeah.
For this particular purpose.
So really, it just is getting rid of the whole two-year timeframe altogether. Could it be designated the SRO at any time?
No.
So what is the time?
The two, this is only, this is only for non-conforming structures that exist within a neighborhood of residential zoning. All right? So this only fits for those structures that have not been occupied like a church. And for instance, you have a church that hasn't had any services for two years. So it's no longer, it can no longer continue to operate as a church after the two-year period. So you have to do something with that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking. It's after the two-year period where it's not operating as a church, that's when it seeks the SRO.
Yes.
Okay.
But it has to go through BZA to do that.
Okay. This is a new thing for BZA to work with.
It's a new use.
Use, that's what I meant, that they could use. So if someone purchases a building from a church after one year, but not operating as a church, do they have to wait another year in order to get the SRO?
They could not, they, they could. What you're asking me is, would it apply to a church that sold a what you're saying?
Well, no, I guess I'm just, if, if the owner of the lot where the church was on, if it's no longer operating as a church, if someone's coming in, like a Mister Miller, who's seeing a business opportunity, but that business opportunity can't be reached for another year, does that building have an incentive to stay vacant for another year in order to reach the two-year period?
No, that would be example of, you're talking about the McNair Men's Mission. That's the same thing there.
Yeah, it was within months.
It was with, yeah, it just basically opened and closed. It wasn't within the weeks.
Okay.
So that's how that worked.
Difference there, people, that is an SRO.
No, 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 no. It's an overnight.
Yeah, that's okay.
Any questions?
Any others?
Okay, good question.
All right. Anything else, Mister Pittsick?
No, no.
Besides mowing grass?
Just mowing a lot of grass, a lot of grass.
Okay, we have a couple of people want to speak to us tonight. Oh, yes, Mister Miller, I'm sorry.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. First, thank you for your time. And real quick, to, yes, obviously it's real estate, so it is a business opportunity. I came to Washington Courthouse, Ohio as a kid. My grandfather lived here. He has multiple properties here, Joe Gray. And the thing that he kind of instilled in me was make sure people always have, have a place to stay, right? So when I came back and I kind of was talking to my grandparents and just some people in the community, and I found out people was paying four hundred dollars a week to stay at hotels. And then I saw the opportunity to purchase the church, to have real estate where people can stay that's affordable. It was like a no-brainer for me. So, yes, it is business. I believe business at the heart is serving people and providing value. And that's ideally what all my transactions in Courthouse are, as far as real estate and business in general. So I just want to say that and thank you.
Mister Miller?
Yes, sir.
At this church, you're going to do this, uh, single occupancy. Will there be somebody on the property twenty-four seven?
So twenty, as in they will be a resident there, yes. And basically they'll be paid because their rent will be discounted and they'll be like the property manager. So they'll be in.
They will live there.
Correct.
Okay, very good. I just thought that would be a, if you're gonna be renting rooms, you have to have somebody.
I got you. That's right. But that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some local residents. The first, this is Kay, get up here, girl. You know the routine.
I do. My name is Dela Castor Key. I live at one-three-one-one Farmington Lane here in Washington Courthouse. Thank you all for letting me speak. Happy belated Easter to all of you. I do have some questions. For timing-wise, Mister Miller and I were not able to get together and this is, this isn't in my backyard, but it is in my community. And I am, I, I love Washington Courthouse. I'm happy that we moved here twenty-two years ago. We love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors, we've been very pleasantly happy here. But I am concerned. I, Mister Miller did define one of Mister Shilts' questions that I was going to ask, and that is, you know, is somebody going to be on the premises? And is that a done deal? Is that a guarantee that somebody is going to be there? How do we know that? Is that going to be monitored? That is a real concern because as you all know, when there's an absentee owner, then that property can go vacant. All of this zoning gets changed or whatever needs to be done. I don't understand all of this, the room and no board. But, but my concern is an absentee owner. I'm very concerned with that. And I think if other people in the city of Washington Courthouse knew that, I think they would be interested. It's sad that just the Castor Keys seem to be the only ones that are coming to city council meetings. It would be nice to have all of the others. Also too, my, my other question is, is there a contract? Is there, are there rules and regulations and guidelines? And what happens if someone breaks those? Who defines what that is? Who makes sure that that goes, that that's followed through as far as the consequences or disciplines? And what is that? How is, how are the guidelines? How often is it, does somebody come in and inspect it? Does somebody come in and? How, I don't know those. Maybe you all do and that's why I'm at a loss because I don't know. And some of the questions, I don't even know what to ask. And my other question was, have the neighbors been notified that this is possibly coming? And we did take a drive over there and we didn't get out and walk around. But I didn't know, there is going to be traffic. It's not just going to be on Sundays. It's not going to be just maybe Wednesday night services. There is going to be traffic. And that's coming and going. That's going to be a little more than what the neighborhood has been used to having. So I didn't know if you all had been over by there to take a look at it, but we did go over there to see. And so I, I'm gathering you all have. Yeah, I trust that you all have. But I am concerned about that. So I would say to please take all of these questions into consideration when making your decision. And and my concern is down the road. Is there, is there something that maybe we didn't ask or something that we did overlook? Because in talking to Mister Miller today, this isn't going to be the only project or building that he is going to do. And so these are going to be around in various locations. And so if this one is approved for what he wants to do, does he have to go through the same process for every other one or does this set precedence? And so, and so these are the things that I have questions about. I think that's.
Yeah, it absolutely sets no precedent because this legislation does not approve what Mister Miller is proposing to do. Currently, what he would like to do is, it's impossible. What, if they choose to pass this, Dela, that sets up the framework where he would go through the process with the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the Board of Zoning Appeals could set whatever requirements the board deemed to be advisable, so long as they are reasonable. It can't be arbitrary, like, you know, you can't say every one of these must be painted pink. But you can say that, you know, BZA wanted to, you know, they could restrict how many people could be at this location because of the parking arrangements that are there. You know, they could come up with if, you know, once a year annually, we would like the fire department inspected. I mean, they could come up with a list as, pretty much as long as they want to do.
So then my question is, is who are the, who is the board chairperson of the BZA?
Is it still David, sir?
Okay, I talked with Mister Fish and he, nothing has been presented. He said he's.
This, this has not gone, gone from to the BZA at this point.
Okay.
Is, the planning commission made the recommendation that the zoning ordinance be amended as stated in the ordinance.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
In other words, he's not done yet.
No.
Well, and I was confused because two weeks ago, when you all were voting to table or not table it, I was confused because comments made that he had been going to the board. And you, and you all felt like this decision to table this was either good or not good. And that decision was made individually and you all agreed to table it. So I was confused because in talking with Mister Fish, he said nothing had come before him. So I was confused what boards he had gone to. And so I didn't know what boards he had gone to. And I thought it was the BZA, but it hadn't been yet.
Right. Right now, there's no way for him to get to the BZA.
Okay.
If you pass this, there'd be a way for him to go to the BZA.
Yeah. So I, I really would like you all to really think and consider what the, what it might or might not be. You're basically, if you vote to send it to the BZA, then that becomes on their shoulders in their final decision. And hopefully, I will definitely be at that, those meetings for sure. And to make sure that the taxpayers are protected as well as the people that are possibly going to be living in those. If they are, if it is a go. So just, just, yeah. So I didn't know what boards he had gone before. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Mark, let me clarify one thing that I think Dela asked. If Mister Miller wants to do this again, have a second place, he doesn't have to go through the planning commission because, if we approve it.
That's correct.
But he still has to go to BZA.
That's correct.
And so if his, this project turned out to be really bad, the BZA could be, you know what? Oh, so anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Does anybody know this person? When it comes, sign up there.
My gosh, the press is here now. Now we're in trouble.
Before I take my hat off, I will say I have been through Mister Miller's building at the church. He showed it to me. It's very nice inside. He's doing a lot of renovations. And I do believe he's doing a good thing for people that, that need it. Now, we take this off. And this is Amy and I'm Gail and we just live in Courthouse. And I would like to say to all city council members and all city residents as Citizen Gail, I would like to announce that there will be a candidate's night forum with questions and answers for all the candidates who are running for city council in the fall election. The date is Tuesday, September thirtieth. Please put this on your calendars. The place is the Commission on Aging on Elm Street. The time is six PM to eight PM. Refreshments will be provided. Questions related to city events, housing, parking, and government are being written and will be available prior to the event. There will be one blind question, so be prepared. Amy Wright and I have been coordinating this event with three sponsors, a representative of the League of Women Voters, Remington Electric, and the Record Herald. We have, have a guest celebrity host whose name will remain secret until the night of the event. All candidates are invited and expected to answer prepared questions to be asked by the guest host. Given time limits for replies due to the two-hour limit for the meeting. If time is available, we'll take a couple of questions from the audience. At this time, all four incumbents are running for reelection plus two courthouse residents. So as you know, the Board of Elections chooses the top four vote. chooses the top four vote getters for Council C's. So it's time to go campaign and good luck to everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You can put your hat back on now.
Yeah. I'm a reporter.
Okay. We have no others, so we'll move into, it's probably going to be a complicated legislative process, but we'll go, we'll try. Uh, legislation previously introduced, I believe we didn't want to take A off yet.
Correct.
So we'll just move to B, which happens to be ordinance number four, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move that ordinance four, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second.
Who was it?
Ted.
Yeah. No, no, you can have it.
Discussion.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash two thousand and twenty-five and ordinance amending codified ordinance, section one-one-four-point-zero-four, license fees and term for the purpose of door-to-door sales and solicitations.
Okay. Here we go with ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five. And I believe the first thing we need to do, if you want to, is to take it off the table.
Yes. I'll move that we place or take ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five, off the table and back onto reading.
Second. Okay, thanks, Jim and Sylvia. So we're voting to take it off the table. Let's keep all these votes straight. Um, I don't think we have a discussion on this, so roll call.
Roll. Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. It is off the table. Next thing we have to do is have the first reading. Someone wants to make a motion for that?
I'll make a, a motion that the ordinance five, twenty twenty-five be put on first reading.
I'll second.
I think we don't have discussion here. I know it's, we're going to amend, but anyway. Okay, uh, roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You need to have discussion and then if you want to amend it, somebody has to make a motion.
Oh, during discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, during discussion, it has to be amended.
I know, I'd screw it up. Okay.
It's okay.
Uh, discussion.
So we're just discussing the amendments made.
What's the motion to, to amend the ordinance pursuant to the, uh, handout that was, that was given to council earlier?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, are we doing this for me? Okay, so I will make a motion that we revise pursuant to the bill that we received with the revisions.
With the amendment, that's correct.
With the amendment?
That's correct.
Somebody else is doing the next one.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second now.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know, it's complicated.
Got it? Sort of.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay. This is on the amendment. Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Now, we need to vote on the amended legislation.
Correct.
First reading.
First reading.
Okay. We need a motion for the first reading of the amended legislation.
I will move that we put ordinance five, twenty twenty-five, is going to be on this reading.
First reading.
First reading has amended.
Has amended.
Second.
There you go.
Uh, boy. Do I need discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Now I do amended ordinance number five dash two thousand and twenty-five and ordinance establishing a vacant and/or abandoned buildings.
Okay. Next is ordinance number six. I think we got to go through the same process.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so first, we need to take.
I move that we place ordinance number six, twenty twenty-four, on second reading.
Thank you. I'll second.
Any to amend?
Yes.
During discussion.
I move that we amend ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we need to vote?
Yeah.
Have to have a roll call.
Have discussion before. Okay.
You gotta, you gotta have discussion.
Okay, very good. Discussion. Go ahead, Caleb. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I move to amend ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five. That's over, right?
This is for the signage.
For signage pursuant to the handout.
Yeah.
Yes. And, no, I think it'd be a good idea to change the siding, give us a different look downtown. So I don't have any problem with that.
You need a second.
Give my second.
I'll second. Thank you.
There we go.
You're welcome. Please a second. Okay.
Okay.
Now, roll call for the amendment.
Roll call for the amendment.
I thought we had a discussion now.
Well, the discussion was to amend.
Well, now, we got to vote on the amendment.
We got to vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Yep.
On the amendment, yes.
Who's on first?
We have to have another roll call.
Go ahead.
Roll call to amend it.
Yes, yes.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Now you are changing to twenty twenty-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Blair, sorry.
He said yes.
Lynch. Yes. Sorry, this was changed.
Okay, now we're amended. We need to have a motion to pass the amended. And this is second reading still, Mark?
Yes.
And then this is where we could have discussion if there were any.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We move ordinance six, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
Amended ordinance, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have seconds. Discussion.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Amendment to ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-five and amended ordinance, amending ordinance number six dash ninety-three, downtown design, review standard, and design criteria. Is that right?
What's that?
Close up.
Guess what? Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five is also tabled. Do we want to vote? Does anyone want to make a motion to take it off the table?
I make a motion to untable ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five. Second. There you go.
Okay, that was Jim, if you didn't hear it coming. Or Jim Blair.
I'm in a restaurant, all these tables.
Okay.
Okay. We've got to have a roll call to amend.
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
I have no idea where we are.
All right. I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to make a motion.
We already did. We already did make a motion. All I could do is roll call.
Roll call.
Thank you.
We are.
Hawk, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
I think so.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Could somebody pause the video for us?
I was just going to tell them, we're normally better than this. Not by much, but a smidge.
Yes.
I forgot who is on first.
Lynch.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it's off the table. Does someone want to make a motion for the first reading?
Now, I'll, I'll say ordinance seven, twenty twenty-five, I'll put it on first reading. Second.
Discussion.
There we go. I'll, I'll just briefly.
Okay.
Um, I did a lot of thinking about this because I upheld my word to think about it. And number one, I want to say you are an incredibly good speaker. You're, you're very welcome here all the time. I want you to know that. Um, the hurdle you are going to have to face, I think, in this language is going to be that you have to show that this activity would have a lesser impact on the residential neighborhood. I know for a fact a hundred churchgoers once a week can have a lot less impact on a community than if you have one bad apple come into your community and start doing bad acts. And I'm not saying that's you. I'm saying that you're going to have tenants in there. And I know you're trying to do good things. And, and as someone who professionally works with a lot of negligent people, me, I do that. I have to also recognize not all of those people are good people. And, and that's just, that's just the truth of it. And so I think that what Della was saying has a lot of truth into it, where I'm sure many neighborhoods would prefer a hundred churchgoers once a week than someone who perhaps has, you know, people who are fighting a drug addiction and are doing very, making very bad decisions while in the throes of addiction. Um, you know, maybe, uh, they're just not at the point in their life where they're making good decisions for a different reason, you know? Um, I saw on Facebook today a good friend of mine, Fred Woolshide, husband of our municipal court judge, he talked about how he had video of someone stealing his grandson's bike right out of the front driveway. And that impacted him and his family more than a church, one guy. Um, and it's, it's really sad when things like that happen in this community. And so that's why so much thought gets put into this is because it's not because of you, you're doing, I think, a very noble thing. And I want you to know that. So, you know, we do have to put in our independent judgment and make sure that we're also thinking about the people who inevitably don't have as good motives as you. And so I just want you to know that. That's the distinction. That's why so much thought has been put into this. I've been thinking about it a lot. And so I want you to know that I've been putting in the time on it, thinking about it. I'm going to vote yes on this. But I think that's the, the hurdle, is that language is just, has to have a lesser impact. And I think it's not just about numbers. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I, there's a lot of single-family rentals, houses and duplexes around and so on, so I'm not sure how much different this will be than that. I mean, there's a potential of it being maybe a danger, but I, you know, we, we, we have rentals all over town.
Mm-hmm.
And don't really control who owns in those. So, and they're not near as regulated as what we're talking about here.
Okay. Schultz, you want to say something?
I want to say that I think Ted is exactly right. I own two pieces of property and right in the middle of them is a apartment complex, which is an old house that they rent basically rooms. Now, these rooms do have a refrigerator and stuff. And people come and go from there constantly. There are always new people coming in every two or three months, new people. Has there been a lot of problems there? No. And we've lived there, I've owned these properties for fifteen years, right there beside where this is at. And there hasn't been hardly, I can't remember more than twice in fifteen years, the police had to come over, but it was for a different situation. Also, I have to think about the Hostienda that's there on Washington Avenue, which has been there for, ever since I can remember. I had a nephew that lived there in a room for about six months. And he said it was probably one of the nicest places he'd lived. No problems. I don't recall any police department being there on a daily, weekly, monthly visits. They, people come and go. I mean, they may live there a week, they may live there ten days, they may live there six months, and they come and go. But not really any real problems. So it can be, you're right. Mr. Johnson is exactly right. It could be potential. But so could any hotel motel in town. Could be a potential problem. So I would vote yes on this also. I'm hoping you'll be a good steward. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Lynch, one point of information and Mark will have to help me.
Okay.
Um, and this isn't set in support of or against the, the, the question. But this resolves the zoning impasse and gives the BZA an opportunity to address non-conforming uses. And that process can go through, you know, if you passed it, just exactly what's laid out. But nothing would compel this council from adopting other legislation that regulated SROs so long as it, it, you know, it functioned in a general manner throughout the entire community.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would only comment, I do think the Planning Commission again has questioned you about everything you could probably question you about. You obviously, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Johnson, we've questioned you about a lot of things. I'm sure the BZA will question you about a lot of things.
Again.
Uh, I, I have a real place in my heart for people who need help. Those of us who are fortunate enough to not need help. It's easy to say it could be a problem, and it could be. It could be. I agree with Caleb. Uh, but if we, if we made decisions based on it could be a problem, I don't know what anything would happen. So, anyway, I appreciate all the comments, all the thought that's been put into this by planning by us, and I'm sure by BZA. Okay, this is the first reading for ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five. Caleb, roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. I think you just, you had to bring along the helper there.
Yes.
Oh, gosh. I thank council members too. I think you did a good job. Thank you. Okay, new legislation in writing. First is ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we put ordinance eight, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number eight dash two thousand and twenty-five and ordinance expressing the city's intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on a one-price schedule under which electric light service shall be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting.
Okay, ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-five is the fireworks. Ordinance, are we?
I would ask to put it on first reading.
Yeah.
We're going to make the changes and we'll submit to you the amendment for next meeting.
Okay. Well, we can go ahead and put it on first reading. Well, we do that. And then I think earlier it was discussed by Mr. Christman to table this one, if I remember right, so that the changes could be made and presented.
Whatever, Mr. I.
That's up to council.
We got two lawyers here. You two can fuck.
That's up to, that's up to council. Council decides. You want to table it, table it.
If we put it on first reading, then you do what?
We'll do, we'll do an amendment just like we did tonight.
And then we'll start all over?
No, no. We'd be on the second reading.
We'd be on the second reading.
That's right.
I would, I would prefer that, yes.
Well, somebody make a motion then.
All right. Well, the first of all, we're going to make a motion, ordinance nine, twenty twenty-five, we're going to put it on first reading tonight.
That's correct.
Second.
Okay. And discussion. Roll call.
Call, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance regulating the use, sale and possession of fireworks within the city of Washington Courthouse.
Ordinance number ten twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number ten twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hawk, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Mine says R eighteen twenty twenty-five.
You got Brooklyn.
No, this is the amended one.
Yeah, the amended, and I have this one.
There was an amendment I put in front of me, Jim.
Okay. Too much paperwork.
There is tons of it.
Okay, yes.
Okay, everybody, yes.
Sorry, Blair?
Yes.
And Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement.
And resolution number R eighteen twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R eighteen twenty twenty-five on first reading.
A second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hawk, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for dispatcher, secretary dispatcher, dash two thousand and twenty-four, dash M E D, dash twelve, dash fourteen twenty-five.
Resolution number R nineteen twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R nineteen twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Well, I'll second then, I'm sorry, I was writing something down.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hawk, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for patrol officers, dash two thousand and twenty-four, dash M E D, dash twelve, dash fourteen twenty-seven.
Resolution number R twenty twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R twenty twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion?
I was just curious how these are numbered, like, the first one was ended in fourteen twenty-five, then the next one was fourteen twenty-seven, then the last one fourteen twenty-six, are they, there is some kind of order, or how they were negotiated?
That's the mediation number you get from Sir Ted, and it doesn't have any impact on the order that they were negotiated, and it wouldn't make a whole lot of difference, but the nature of the way that sergeant's wages and dispatch wages are linked to what you do with patrolmen, you'd start every negotiation session with patrolmen first, then you talk to sergeant second, and then the third group would be dispatch.
The only reason I ask is we're having so much fun, I thought that might have been a little.
It just fits, it just fits the evening.
Ted, I thought that fourteen twenty-seven year.
Everything's been out of.
Wasn't that fourteen twenty-seven year you was born? No, that was the. Year four.
It started with the, you know what? It's your fault. Okay, I think we've had discussion now, roll call.
Hawk, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty dash two thousand and twenty-five, resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for sergeants, twenty twenty-four, dash M E D, dash twelve, dash fourteen twenty-six.
Okay.
Quite the evening.
Mr. Schultz, you're up to bat first, what do you wanna say?
Well, you know, I wanna thank Mr. Ruber, I thought that's fantastic, I got one of the last World War Two people living here in Washington Courthouse, it's really quite something, and you gotta think about this, is the next war, I'm still working on people, that'll be the next one coming out, they're Korean War veterans, then they're becoming up over the next, and then Jimmy, they'll finally catch up with us in Vietnam eventually, you know, so it is. It's really scary to think about that, you know, and I want a proclamation, I'm telling you. I deserve that, but anyway, but anyway, it's something to think about, and we will, and now we're starting with Korea, and then we'll come up to Vietnam, it's crazy what to think about all this, so, but anyway, also, I want to, I'll be, be there, Ted, when you branch out for the Armor Day, I'll certainly be there, I can't stay for long, I'll listen to your proclamation, and then I have to leave very quickly.
There's several wearports and stuff in it.
So, I will be looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blair?
No, sir, I have nothing.
I can't imagine why, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I would like to thank everyone for coming, I see some new faces, I always like seeing new faces here, council, I like also seeing the faces that are reoccurring. Yeah, with, with Mr. Ruber here, I thought about my own grandfather, who's not in Washington Courthouse, in Assala, Ohio. In fact, both of my grandfathers served in World War Two. One of them died before I was born, so I didn't have to meet him unfortunately, but the other one is still alive and kicking, and that's ninety-eight years old, this, this October, he will be ninety-nine, and he says he wants to live to a hundred, but not much longer after that. But, yeah, it makes me, and reminds me of him, that he is very proud of his service, and talks about it, and, and he had a brother who died over there. Wow. He was in a big family, and a brother who died over there, so it directly impacted him, even as, you know, everything was unfolding, his family, right, even though he went across the country, it affected his own family so directly, so profoundly. And he, but he's very proud of serving, and so I think of him whenever I see us do a proclamation of that, so thank you.
I'm appreciative of all of the new faces and returning friends, I agree you spoke wonderfully, Mr. Miller, and that was good information to have, I work in the field of early intervention, so I've had a lot of families dealing with homelessness or, or home insecurity, and unfortunately, some families living out of cars with two-year-olds on the autism spectrum, and that, like, it's not ideal for anyone, so I think what you're offering our community just sounds like a really cool opportunity for some of those families needing support, and I, I don't deal with the side of humanity that, that Caleb sometimes has to deal with, so I'm not privy to that, but I, I do know that I know some families who could have really benefited from that, had that been in place, so thank you for sharing that, that's pretty cool.
Mr. Hawk?
Well, I'm glad Mr. Miller told us what family he comes from, you should be proud of that, the greats, Mr. Gray. I promised a riddle. What does the number six hundred and sixty-four thousand signify? Anybody know?
Six hundred and sixty-four.
It has to be something to do with, like, how many White Castle burgers are sold.
Yeah, that's gotta be White Castle.
Annually, month, I don't know, but.
That's your final answer?
How many onions on one White Castle?
Okay, that's how many of those sliders you have to put side by side to equal the Boston Marathon, twenty-six point two miles.
I said it, go fast. Right on the tip of my tongue.
No, I didn't figure that out myself, that was on the internet.
You didn't, you didn't stack them along.
Oh, my God. You wouldn't be able to run the Boston Marathon.
He probably needs to at that point, but.
Mr. Chrisman?
Come on, Jim, get us out of this mess.
Mr. Miller, good luck to you, I think it's well needed, and I wish you the best. Now, I've been divorced for several years, I won't have to worry about my wife kicking out, so I will not need your service. 'Cause after five, I ain't going to number six. Your aunt she passed away. Hey, that's all I have, thank you.
If I could be serious for a moment. First of all, Jim and Steve, I had no idea, and nobody does, whether you'll make it to United or not. But I do appreciate it, everybody who served in World War Two or any time, and that is frankly why I asked you two to help me, because I appreciate it very much, what you two did, what he did, what everybody who has served had done.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Anyway, the other person I would like to mention had a funeral yesterday for her, that's Mary Lorraine Davis. Obviously, she was the wife of one of our longtime council members, Gordon, who died a few years ago, but for me, she was also an educator, was the librarian for many years at school, and we also appointed her, and she served many years on the library board. So she was a servant of this city, to be sure, and she will be missed. Finally, I would like to congratulate our clerk of council for wearing her best Blue Lion dress tonight.
Bet she intended that.
And since I had my Washington shirt on, I think she put dirt in my drink. To get back at me. Anyway, it's been a long night, does somebody wanna make a motion to?
A second.
You get that, Caleb?
I did, thank you.
Roll call.
Hawk, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, and we are adjourned, thank you.